Good evening. My name is Art Whitman, Vice Chair of the Chaspray Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30. First thing on the agenda is conflict of interest. Is there anybody that has a conflict of interest with the agenda that's been?
No.
Driven out? Okay. Approval of minutes?
No minutes went out for this meeting. I was away from on vacation, so they didn't get in the drop box.
Are we pretty much caught up?
Yeah, yeah. It's just the last special meeting that I wasn't here for needs to be approved.
We don't have the luxury of the screen this time. We apologize, but there's an electrical problem behind us, so hopefully we'll be back in the high-tech division next time. Okay, warrants. Got some warrants here. First one's a big one. Warrant number two, $192,920.13. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Approved by Tony, seconded by Ken. Let's see. Usually they'll go down through ones over $1,000. Bennington County, probably for some of our dues to Bennington.
Yeah, those are the annual payments. Those two of them, they're totaling about $14,000.
Probably want to mention that this is so big because we're making a lot of payments in advance.
A lot of?
This is the start of 2018 fiscal year.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah, the majority of this warrant is for next year.
Yep.
Or this current year.
Goldstein Architectures, we're working on the new garage, designing of the new garage. Penguin Management Incorporated.
That's the fire department charging system for the air tanks.
Okay. All of the Richards Group, there's a whole bunch of them for a lot of money, probably.
They totaled around $50,000. It's all the insurance that we approved a few months ago for the town.
Payment advance. I saw a delury for $5,000.
And that was reimbursed by insurance that was the truck fall over.
Another one was the, some payments to, on the Volvo and one of the trucks. Maybe the last one on some of them.
It is the last one for one. The other one has one more year to go.
Membership dues.
Was that a dump truck, David?
Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I didn't look this up beforehand, I believe the Santander is the dump truck and Sun Trust is the Volvo and the Dodge. And the Volvo and the Dodge have one year to go, I believe. And the Santander would be the dump which will be over with.
Our 2018 membership dues to Vermont League of Citizens and Towns, $5,000. Wholesale distributors, $2,000, 2320. William E. Daley for $6,400 and William E. Daley for $4,600, probably for chloride and gravel.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Payroll warrant. Says payroll warrant number one. Yeah, that's right. This is the first of our year.
Yes, this is the year.
Stare all over again. For a total of 1,000, or I'm sorry, $17,587.45.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Ken. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're getting into some strange ones here. Okay, this is water warrant number two. Even though the man working for the water department is a town employee.
Yes.
Working on the road crew. For transparency, we're making sure that all his expenses are.
Yeah, because the water department is an enterprise fund, so everything is completely separate. Only the rate payers fund that. So we bill them for town services provided to them.
Okay.
And then it'll just reflect out the cost of the rate payer, the water department turns out to be about the same for the year.
Okay. Looks like the total is $2,773.92.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Ken. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is check warrant number 42. Vermont State Treasurer, $250. This is the share of what, marriage licenses?
Yes, so it has to be paid to the state.
This has to be paid to the state.
This is one of those that we're seeing for the first time because of the transfer of the clerks.
Where the clerk does not keep it anymore?
The clerk does not keep the fees. We send it to the state and we pay the clerk.
Okay. So, check warrant 42 for $250 to the state of Vermont for marriage licenses.
So moved.
Tony?
Second.
Ken, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one, this one is check warrant number 26. Town or council payable. This is for. This must be a retirement?
Beamer's? Is that Beamer?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's a retirement.
Retirement thing. Check warrant 26 for $8,804.55. It's a retirement policy.
So moved.
Second.
Tony? Ken? Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 4-0-0.
46 or 26?
What's that, 8,806?
No, no, the check warrant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
46?
26. And the last one is payroll warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Tony? Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have I got any announcements this morning, this evening? Nothing, Dave, for you?
No.
Treasurer's report. Did you make it up without getting wet, or did you drive?
I drove. It looks like this is really going to pour soon.
Okay. We can't put it up on the screen, but he passed out two copies.
Okay.
So we're all, we all know what you're talking about.
Well, let's look at June 1st, June before the other one, it is to say. So we closed out the year pretty uneventfully. We've already talked about a lot of the receipts that are unusual, so we don't need to go into it again, but you can see them listed here too. The, that water, or no, was that when in July? Sorry, no, that's later. So let's see, in June, we've got a big inter-fund transfer just to allow us to get as much cash as we can in the bank before we need to draw on our line of credit. What else is in here? There's nothing else all that interesting here. Unless you have any questions about any of it. There's the insurance payment that we just talked about. It's actually pretty straightforward, unless you have questions. But then at the very bottom, you can see how we finished the year. And that is, Tim's not here. If he were here, he would ask me if we have the final number yet. We will not have it for a little while. That, actually, that expenditures, I think is, we're going to shift some things around down there, so these are not final numbers.
Yeah, the expenditure will go down with today's warrant and a few things coming in, but coming in right at about 100% of budget is going to be about the line.
It couldn't be much closer than.
But that also includes all the work we did at the park rolled into that, so.
That's amazing.
That came out pretty well.
Wow.
And that's following last year, which was also incredibly accurate, those. Hats off to Dave. Okay, we can look at July if you want to, unless you, does anybody have any more questions about the fiscal year end? Once it's really ended, we'll have a more detailed discussion, but this is a pretty close snapshot, I would say. Let's see, so let's look at July. That's where you can see that water invoice that you were just talking about. So it appears here in the general fund because it's reimbursing for checks, basically, that we, I mean, money that we had expended. You already talked about it already, I don't even, it's just making the general fund hole for the portion of the effort that was, that one worker was doing on behalf of the water department.
Yep, okay.
Got our tax rebate in there, a nice chunk of delinquent taxes, which will, they're going to stop coming in pretty soon because the real taxes will start coming in. We've got some highway state aid money that just came in today. So that was, it's nice that we've got some receipts because, again, that allows us to put off drawing on the line of credit. But speaking of the line of credit, I think Dave's got the paperwork. We need to do that today.
Let's do it at the end of your.
Okay. Well, so that's July, we're just halfway through. I don't really have anything to say about it yet, but as I say, it does mean that we've got, until that big honking warrant that you guys just signed, we had almost $400,000 in the bank, but you're going to, we're going to lose a lot of that with the $250,000 warrant you just signed.
Yep.
But no, under 92?
190, but there was.
190, yeah, it was a whole bunch of 192.
It's going to be over 200,000.
Yeah.
250,000 probably.
Yeah, well, a lot of that's already hit it, but anyway, so we do need to get the line of, we're going to need to tap it probably next month.
Okay.
So that's all I have to say about cash flow, unless you have any questions about either of these months.
Tony?
Okay.
Tony?
No.
Okay, cool. So we do need to, this is, you've been through, most of you've been through this before. We just need to, I think you have to adopt a resolution. I can, if you want to give me the paperwork, I can walk through it.
Please.
Done it a few times now. So this first one, we all need to sign. It just, I don't think it needs to be notarized. So this is just the actual note, and then, and then I've got it marked with another one to sign it, and then Marlene is going to need to say that those are actually your signatures.
All of us?
Yes, all or a majority thereof. So it's okay that Tim's not here, as long as we've got it for him.
Yeah, but the point is, can we, can we sign it right now, or do we have to meet with her?
No, you can say, it doesn't have to be notarized, it just, she just has to say that they are, that the foregoing signatures are true and genuine.
Okay, so it is not a.
It doesn't have to be in her presence.
Too notary, okay then.
And then there's, there's just, you just have to have in the minutes that you have approved the note.
So moved? Okay. All right, so.
And then they sign on the last page as well. And then I have to sign this thing to go through the IRS.
Can we do all that with one motion?
Yeah, do a motion to, I'm sorry, what was the email?
Oh, it says on the note, let's see, it's at the top.
300,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so the town is going to need money in anticipation of taxes?
Right.
We feel that we've got to borrow at least $300,000?
Not at least, at most.
At most?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
There is a difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So no more than $300,000 will be borrowed? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Oh, second.
Okay, Ken, or motion by Ken, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? You understand what it's for, Joe?
A little bit, but so there's a least and there's a most. That kind of caught my attention.
Okay. I misspoke. So we cannot borrow more than $300,000. That's, that's what the motion is.
I could, why don't I walk you through what happens? It's just because of the way the cash flow works, we get the bulk of the money that we operate with in October and November, but.
Taxes. So it's better to have enough than not enough.
Right.
But if we overshoot the target, what do we do with the excess money?
If we, you mean if we need, or if we don't.
If we don't need as much.
Oh, then we just pay, we just pay it back with the interest on what we have borrowed all in a lump in December, when it comes due. I think it's December 15th. So it's just the way that the expenses are pretty much even across months, but the, we get all the revenue all at once. So this time of year, we tend to run out of cash.
Do you take the whole 300,000? Do you take the whole 300,000, or just take it as you need it?
I generally draw about 100,000 at a time, just as I, I don't like to have less than 100,000 in the bank because, you know, surprises happen.
You never know.
Yeah, so.
But we only pay interest on what you draw.
Yes.
So that's the point.
And the interest rates are so low, it's really just more of an insurance. I mean, last year, I think we only ended up, I'd have to check it, but I think we only ended up drawing about 100,000 of it.
Perfect.
So, yeah, so that's, that's the, it's just because of the way cash flow works.
Any other discussion? We have a motion? Is there, in a second, or?
Yep, one second by Tony.
Yep. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried 4-0-0. Okay, so we've got to sign this in several places.
In three places. I'll mention also that, and maybe Dave's going to talk about this, but all of that bond paperwork that we did last time, it went through okay, so it looks like we did it right.
You did okay.
You may not have been nervous about it, but I was.
Yeah, the bonds were sold on the 13th, so we will have the final paperwork in our rate maybe next week. The rates, according to Bob of the bond bank, were very good, very competitive this year. Ours is will be somewhere around 3%, which is kind of what we were anticipating, 3, 3.5.
Three places.
But they don't have the final number yet, and they'll send us a whole schedule, but it's all been approved, it's already been solved, so we're ready to go. It should be funded, I think he said August 4th.
Gave me two motions.
So moved.
Do you have a feeling where delinquent taxes are as compared to previous years?
I think they're better than last year. I think they're quite a bit better than two years ago.
I got that sense.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked at it for the end of the fiscal, it doesn't really work with the fiscal year, works with the tax year.
Tax year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it seems to be in pretty good shape.
Dave might as well.
Yeah, I think I'll take it.
She's now empowered to go get some money.
Yeah. I got to get Marlene's signature.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any? Annual tax assessment note.
Nope, we just did.
That's, that's what we did, it's okay.
So we have the road warrant report. Steve can't be here this evening. If you want to discuss that, we can talk about it in a personnel session afterwards, but he can't make it tonight. So basically, let me get to one thing quickly. Has anyone been able to observe these lights over here?
No. Night, no.
I'll have to swing by. I'll come down, it probably isn't the best night for it, but come down and look at, because we need to just sign off, because our check is sitting on the desk in my pillor, because if these aren't fixed right, we can't close it, and my reimbursement's all been approved already, but it's still open over here, so.
I'm out of the loop as to what the complaint was.
Oh, they were way too bright.
Too bright?
The streetlights they put in, and they were too bright because the engineer ordered the wrong lights.
Okay.
And so what they had to do, we had to go back and forth on how to fix them. KAX absorbed the cost of replacement. Hathaway did the fix, I think, last week or the week before, so I just need.
They dimmed it.
Yeah, what they did was they dimmed them.
Who's, who's, who determined that they were too bright?
We did. I did.
Okay.
You could look at it.
Then maybe you'll be the one to.
Yeah, what happened was, well, you should be able to, what happened was, it was supposed to be in the range of like 80 watts, but what they came out was 80 in LED, which is like airport lights. And we instructed them, and I went back and forth with our engineer on, look, we had this whole chain of discussion on email, how they were to be exactly like Bennington's, the same lumens and everything else, and when they were specked out, they checked the wrong box. And we got, instead of an 80-watt equivalent, we got 80 LED equivalent, which is super bright. So, I mean, it was no problem, they, you know.
I don't have any opinion on.
I haven't been downtown in a.
I'm going to leave it up to, you know.
Okay, I'll just survey them and get on to the, get back to them.
I, I, I went by there, I did one time when I complained about them being so bright.
Did you?
And it was, it was kind of like Albany Airport.
Yeah, it was bright. It's a well-lit U-Haul.
And I haven't, I didn't get the email, I just never got their.
Yeah.
So none of the nearby neighbors complained about it?
Oh, they complained.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They complained the day they went on. You know, we looked at alternate things, but then it was just when I started going through the paperwork, I'm like, this can't possibly be what we specified. And there was no problem with our engineers, they were very good about it, and they paid Hathaway to change to what they should be. And so we resolved it, but we just need an opinion so that I can close this out. Because the state, Derek is sitting with my check on the, our check on the desk, and we just need to accept the project.
I'll try to catch it.
Well, you still want to hold off, Dave? You want to hold off till we?
Yeah, I think we ought to, because I haven't seen it, but I'll ask.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the board gets a chance to look at them and just calls me individually and says, okay, I can just call Derek and say, we'll close the thing. We don't need a vote.
Okay.
It's just if it's.
When were they fixed?
Two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, because I mean, I've gone by it, it just didn't seem like it was that offending, but then it.
Yeah, it's been fixed, it might even be three weeks ago they've been fixed.
Okay.
Because I was away on vacation, so.
So we're, we're going to just let him know, we have my phone and email.
Yeah, yeah. You think they're all right? Just call me and tell me you think they're all right?
Yeah.
I just love running a phone.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so if the board thinks they're all right, then fine, then we'll just close it.
You're having trouble sleeping lately?
Yeah. Thought the sun was descending on us.
Dave, what's the story on that red and light, don't worry, one place?
It's like we discussed, I think it's simply just a matter of getting that tree trimmed back, because at certain times in weather, it's just not collecting enough sunlight.
You haven't, nobody done anything to it?
No, 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 we haven't done anything to it. And now it's running just perfect, and it hasn't been that great weather, and it's running perfect. So, I mean, I have a key and an instruction manual, so I'm not jumping into the back of it to try and figure it out, but, but part of this, when this became part of the plan, I mentioned that we're probably going to have to have a contract with someone to, because part of, part of our deal is we have to maintain this stuff now, and we don't have an electrician, so.
Do we own it?
Excuse me?
We own it?
Yeah, we own all these things, so we're going to have to maintain them anytime they go out. So if we can trim a little bit more off that tree, because we're going to have whoever we have do the tree work, they're going to be doing in our projects where, hey, swing by, trim this thing up, and if it continues to function properly, then we'll leave it alone. Otherwise, we'll have to call, I would assume I'd be calling Hathaway because they installed them, and say, you know, come up and figure out what's wrong with this thing. But I think it's more a startup thing, because it did blackout for like a half a day or a day, and then it's been running nonstop.
It was down a couple days. And it, but it's red. There is no red reason to be happening.
If it continues like that, then, I mean, we have a long warranty on it, so I'm not.
I mean, one day it's working, and then it won't work for two weeks. And you wake up the next day, it ain't working.
Okay. I think trimming either the town crew or tree.
Well, we got up on top of it, we can win as high as we can.
Okay.
But now we have to get somebody to go up higher.
Yeah, you're going to have to have a bucket truck be on that.
Yeah, shave that stuff back, so. Like I said, we're having a meeting with the tree warden, Green Mountain Power, and we're going to mark a bunch of trees.
And Greater Heights?
No, when we do it with Green Mountain, it'll be their contractor and their expense.
Okay.
Because out of our 70-some-odd trees that need to come down, about 28 of them were imperiling their power lines. So they were like, oh, we'll come up and talk about that.
Okay.
So we're going to tour probably next Thursday. I was talking to the tree warden today. And when we get into our trees, which we're going to spend, we budgeted five hundred, we're going to double that, so we can start getting ours down as quick as possible, that'll be a meeting with.
Greater Heights.
With Greater Heights, so we might have to bid that, because we're getting into a lot of money.
Yep, okay.
So we'll have to see who can do it. And if we have enough money to do the volume, it might be we want someone to do the whole thing, not roll the crew into it, because that takes a lot of time.
Yep, okay.
So we'll see how that progresses, but we're definitely going to make progress on our trees this year. We're definitely going to get that in. During the last couple of weeks with the roads, we had a heavy rainstorm which created a lot of washes. The crew worked hard on those for the last couple of weeks. Most of those have been cleaned up. In the last couple of days, we've been putting some culverts in on West Mountain Road and on Daniels. There was a failed culvert on Daniels. They were actually checking and discovered that the entire top had rotted away. They did that, we graded Daniels today, been doing various ditching. We do have a schedule where the road work for the summer that I've shared with the board, and that was a product of sitting down with the road crew and going through what everyone thought could be done, the timeframe we could do it in. Since we made that schedule, we've had a unexpected and immediate retirement, and then we've had a resignation of one of the road crew who's gone off to take another job. So we're tweaking the schedule a little bit, but I have, and I've talked with the crew about it, and we have no doubt that everything we planned can be achieved anyway. Some of it may be as simple as one of the jobs hiring another dump truck for hauling materials. On a lot of the jobs, we hire a contractor to bring material from Daley's up to where we're working, because we can have the crew guys running the grader, running the compactor, doing the groundwork, and people just feeding material. It works out a lot quicker, and we can simply move faster. But along the, the lines of manpower, I'd wanna ask the board tonight for permission to seek out one or two temporary employees, ten to twelve weeks, that we will hire to fill out the construction season. I don't wanna go for regular full-time employees now, because we have insurance issues that we need to discuss. As we're aware, our, our insurance rates for a single, the difference between a single and a family plan is close to twelve thousand dollars cost to the town. So I just don't wanna run out and try and do something. I think we have availability of several people to come on and fill out this season. And then we get into October, November. October, besides doing normal things, we are only doing the transfer station, so it won't be, and that's basically two guys for, for a couple of weeks. It's not taking the whole crew at all. And then we're getting into the winter, so we can even set up plow routes for this winter and even contract them, which I still think is something we need to pursue. But we do, we have vacations coming up, and we've gone from a six-man crew to a five-man to a four-man, and then with somebody on vacation, we have to get some people and talk to at least one or two people that have enough experience in things that they could get to work for us, so...
So you're not gonna use like a temp agency to hire?
Well, you know, the, the issue with the temp agency is that, okay, I get a guy of certain quality, and four days later, I get somebody else, and then the next week, I get somebody else, and build...
Very inconsistent.
Yeah, and building the rhythm with the crew is what you want. You wanna be able to keep, you know, the relationship going.
It's a team.
Yeah, and then also, at the, at the end of the day, if the board decides that we're gonna go back to six or whatever, we basically field interview people for twelve weeks, so...
So you know what you're buying, yeah.
Yeah, but there's no guarantee, you know, that anyone hired temporarily would get a job, but it's something that eventually I thought we'd move into on a retirement, I didn't expect to have a retirement this quickly, and have a summer staff person, a college student, someone with a CDL, or someone who's looking for the seasonal work. I mean, you know, the bottom line is it's cheaper, and we have to be cognizant of that. You know, when we talk about the average that we start, a full-time employee at sixteen dollars an hour, like on the family medical plan, it's seventeen thousand dollars plus for our contribution to that. So it's, it's like half, more than half of what we're paying them, we pay into medical. And that doesn't include the, the retirement pay and social security and all that, so it piles up quickly. In the family, the single plan is eleven thousand, four hundred and some odd dollars less. So it's decision, you know, we started this conversation last winter, and I think we need to pick it up. I wish, you know, we, we knew where all this was going to begin with, it'd make some of these decisions easier, but I always guard against, you know, a big spike in insurance rates, and we, we are not really in a position to absorb that. So if the board, if we can have permission, I'd like to hire at least one, if not two.
At least advertised for it?
Yeah, I'll post it on our website and get a quick ad in the paper, and we have our employee till next Thursday. That'll be her last day. And, you know, if I can get somebody on board by then, that would be good, because then we can at least maintain four, and then whenever she's off vacation, we'll be back up to five and maybe six, and get it going.
The temporaries won't have insurance benefits, so...
No, 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 no. I have a contract for a temporary, because if you remember, I hired Tony Myers for snowplowing and for summer work the year before. So I already have a template that's been approved to hire someone for this. It's very clear that there are no benefits, there's nothing to this, this is straight temporary job, and it's clear that there's no promises from this company. I think we need, we need to get somebody in. And worst comes to worst, if I can't find somebody, then, then we would just go to an agency, but that's not...
I don't think, I don't know of any agency in town that's got people's got CDLs.
No, we have to go, no, we'd have to go out searching. Yeah, we'd have to go out searching, but I don't wanna do that. I'd rather find somebody local who's looking for some work for twelve weeks.
But I mean, we've got the trucks, you know, I don't think we have any trucks to haul stuff, if we have people to drive the ones we got.
No, I agree, it's just the volume to haul to move quickly. On, on big jobs, otherwise, yeah. Which is why it's also kind of, until, we went from six to four, and now I have a hold on the, on the pickup truck we were talking about, because, you know, we need to think for a little bit which direction we're going now. Now, all this was unanticipated, but now that's here, I thought we'd have some time to debate all this, but...
I think we've really gotta look into contracting what we can, because you're gonna start saving on equipment, insurance, hauler. And you don't know what Washington's gonna do with insurance. Another year, it could be a whole different thing.
Yeah. And, you know, I do wanna look into putting out an ad for summer plow routes, we could have two-page plow routes. And I, I had talked to Palin about it, and the guys they had, outside contractors now both work those departments, but they still have part-time seasonal employees come in to plow during the winter. And again, it's those things that you're employing someone local, or you're hiring a local company that keeps them busy during the winter, and it releases us from, from a great deal of overhead. And you're getting times in, in the dead of winter where if you have a big crew, and it's the nature of the business, there's, there's limits to what you can actually do. So it's a, it's a discussion we have to have. If I can get two, two temps on now, we have time for this discussion. Because I really don't wanna run out and start hiring people in a, you know, in a rush here. Yeah, yeah.
Somebody wanna make a motion, or looking for a motion to...
So we'll...
Spector.
Okay. What's your interpretation of the motion?
That we get the temporaries that Dave was talking about? I believe that Dave...
You might be better at it, just so you can, you know, get the better of the two.
Well, yeah, it's also a question of just seeing, you know, who we can... Remember, we didn't have, we went through a lot in the last hiring round. And there's jobs out there now, I gotta tell you, and a lot of towns are looking to people too.
So motion by Ken, second by Tony. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Can't vote both lines. It's hard to record.
I was way out of the gate in my eye.
Okay, that was carried for zero zero, okay? Where do we go? Do we still need to have personnel meeting afterwards?
No, I, I, it would just be to explain something, but it's not necessary.
Okay, all right. Okay, dog license and admits violations?
Yeah, just wanna remind everyone again, because we have had people coming in to register their dogs. If you have not registered your dogs, beginning next week, the constables will start issuing warnings. It'll be the final warning, your, your fee will go up on that. You'll have ten days from that point before a summons to the court in Bennington will be issued. And once the court summons is issued, your fines will go up dramatically, including all court costs, any attorney we hire to represent us, it all becomes your obligation. It started out as a seven-dollar fee, it's up to, I believe, twenty-four dollars now. It'll be double that by the time the constables go around, and then if the summons is issued, it can be as high as a hundred, two hundred dollars, depending on what kind of dogs and how many you have. And then there's also the court fee, your fifty dollars. There's also any other fees that the town encourages to pursue this. But please, just come down and take care of your dog issued now. We're running out of time.
Once you've been presented with a summons, you can't make a payment?
You, you can, you can pay the waiver penalty, which is half of what it would cost in court, but it's still gonna be three or four times what you would pay if you just came down and registered your dog now. So please, just if you have a dog and you haven't licensed it yet, please come down, just license your dog, because we will be coming around. We really don't wanna issue summonses, we really don't wanna do any of this, but the vast majority of dog owners in town have paid, registered, and shown proof of rabies, which this is all about, is to make sure the dogs have rabies shots and all the dogs are healthy. Trust me, none of us really wanna even be going down this road, but it's not fair for all those who have paid, and it's not safe for the community to have these unknown dogs running around.
It's a liability.
It's a liability, sure. So hopefully, if you have a dog and you haven't licensed it, please come down and take care of it now. It's only gonna get much more expensive very quickly after next week. So please come take care of it.
Young man got bit not far from my house, so he's been looking around, trying to find out whose dog it was, but because he couldn't find the dog, he's in the rabies shop.
Yeah, I know, it's, and, and there's dogs, we have a list now, I believe, there are eighty-four persons on it now, and probably a hundred and twenty dogs.
Wow.
And again, that's minority of those in town. Most people have paid, registered, and shown proof of, and it's just a matter of equity. If nothing else, it's a matter of equity. Your other residents have done their responsible thing, you have to come in and do it. And it's a state law, it's not like it's optional to us anyway. It's a state law, and we have to get up to speed on this, and it's just time. So please, come down, save yourself a lot of money. You don't wanna wind up in court over this, it's not gonna be worth it.
Any other discussion on that? Okay. Town garage update?
The town garage update, as I mentioned earlier, the, our bond was sold. We don't have the exact figures yet, but it was all done on the thirteenth, according to Bob Rowe up at the bond bank. Got a very good rate, it'll be three to three and a half percent over twenty years, which is about what we were anticipating. I don't have more specifics than that, but that's right on schedule. MSK has provided us with a couple of preliminary drawings, which the garage committee has discussed. We're just gonna tweak a few things. Everything's pretty much on target this Friday. We're gonna dig some test pits with MSK for where the septic system is, is projected to go. And then we're pretty much waiting for the next round when Goldstone gets done with the architectural drawings, or we'll have more questions, we'll have another sit-down. But everything's moving along on schedule. I know we've had some questions about what's going on up at the site, and we'll just remind people that we will be going out to bid probably at the beginning of September, don't expect to have the bids back till mid-October, and we'll approve the project. Hopefully, if we get the right bids, approve it somewhere in the beginning of November for construction next year. So the yellow house that's up there next to where that green trailer was, the yellow trailer will be taken down over the next month or so, because it's not offensive, it's just sitting there. And then the transfer station work isn't scheduled to begin for us until October, and then we'll take down the old transfer station shortly after that. But that's all down the road, everything is really on track, including the financing, so we're, we're in pretty good shape at this juncture.
So now the bond, is that a variable rate?
No, it's fixed.
So it is fixed.
Whatever rate it comes in, it could even be a little lower than three, you know, they have to work out the details, but it's fixed over twenty years, and, I mean, we have all the funding pretty much in place for it, so it's, it's just something that we get signed up. We will actually have the money in August, and then we can start going as quick as we can.
You're on the, Ken, you're on the garage committee, you feel it's going along?
Oh, yeah, it's doing good.
I do, I do too. You can't, can't rush it, but it's...
Yeah, yeah. It'd be nice, but it, it seems frustrating when, you know, okay, it's approved, where is it? Well, you know, what we had originally was the very small package. This is being fleshed out into actual contractors' packages for bidding, and they will come back with packages containing their bid, which will be evaluated by Goldstone for us, and they'll make advice to us. If we award it in November, it's really not the greatest time of year to start, but the funding's all in place, so come the beginning of the building season next year, it won't be a long project, so it'll, it'll go up pretty quickly.
Well, what's the estimated time to get that up, once the ball's rolling?
I've heard for like the Morton building, three months. But now, we're not necessarily getting, we're getting that building, but there's variants in different builders can, I mean, that's part of the design build process, they've fleshed this out, Goldstone will flesh this out to a bidder's package, but it'll give options, so we can get, we know what Morton wants, but we can get different prices on different even types of materials that could bring this in lower. And it could even bring Morton in with a lower bid, so we'll just, we'll just see where it goes. But everything else is set, it's just a matter of getting the bids, and that just takes time. We can't throw together a package like this quickly.
Okay. Discussion, any other questions? Other business?
I'm gonna have environmental company come in against Coal Hall in pecking away at our water issue up here. I think we have to take part of the ceiling down, see if there's mold up there.
You can see mold up there.
Yes, I'm afraid that, that when that happened, this part over here, when that starts seeping water, I was wondering how much is up there with all the old stone. And we're talking about, the renovation of this floor would have been about forty thousand dollars, and we just have to find, if we have mold up here, we have to just start thinking differently. I have a grant sitting on my desk for rehabbing a historic building, but, I mean, I have to sit and look at that and go, well, what, what direction are we going here? If this is mold, which kind of appears it is, how deep is it? Well, I mean, the, the cost could be astronomical, and then we have to get into the environmental factor up there, and what's behind that wall, we're gonna have to damage the wall to...
Assassinate?
Yeah, I mean, there's a little...
So is the outside fixed, so that it doesn't leak anymore?
Uh, it's, part of the problem is like here, there's a leak downstairs.
Yeah.
That comes from these windows here.
Yeah.
This was blowing attic, so it was flashing around the roof, which...
Around the chimney?
Yeah, trying to get somebody to come do one simple thing, they'll all be waiting for months, but it's, it's highlighted the, the, really the bigger problem. And the other thing was, when the water started coming down there, which I had never seen in, in four years, and I asked Larry and other people, and they're like, I've never seen water. It made me begin to wonder, has water been like pooling behind this wall for a few years? Because this is an oddly constructed building, you know, these are big blocks, and the water's trickling through the different cracks fluid. We really, I don't know any other way other than where it's cracking, they start taking this down and following the trail.
Yeah, no idea.
Hopefully, it doesn't go anywhere, or we have another problem and, and we really need to reassess this too. But again, again, with this building, we hit another roadblock where I thought we would have this done, and then this start, this was pouring water, which had never done, none of us had ever seen it.
Something new opened up.
Yeah, and, and it's like, okay, where was that all these years?
Didn't you have, the roof was standing up, right?
The roof was, was fixed three years ago, I had all the slates fixed, the lower roof we fixed. So if there's any leak, it's just a flashing or something. But, and it only leaks in, that only happened in that really torrential rain we got, but still, it just made me wonder, you know, okay, that was a heavy rain, so has it been slowly leaking for a long time, and that's why it didn't come through? When we had a driving rain a couple of weeks ago, the water literally comes through the framing of the windows downstairs.
Wow.
And, I mean, that's...
That's...
Talking huge money to replace these windows, especially if you wanna be architecturally correct.
Right.
So...
And this is not a certain building at this point?
It is a candidate for the National Historical, whatever it is. Excuse me, my history friends for that, but I can't remember the, what's the name of the place is, but it is not officially listed. And I've gone through that a number of times. We could get the grant because it has a potential for doing it, and in the context of eighteen-hundred buildings in Vermont, it would be worth saving this building, but...
Money would be great.
If it came with money, it would be great, but it didn't, and now we're back at this position again. If this is a mold issue, we're gonna have to think about vacating.
Yeah, but if you, if you had to take that down, Dave, unless you took it down in a block, you can't, how do you replace that?
Very carefully.
Yeah.
Because all these panels, these are seen panels... Because all these panels, these are seen panels, each one of them. Yeah, and this has to be done delicately because you wanna be able to put this stuff back up. You can see where it was not done delicately by the stretch that goes across,
Yeah.
where they apparently either ruined them or lost them, and then just stripped them off there to put up here.
Right.
And then you have the cracks, which have always puzzled me, along there with a matching one along here.
Yeah.
So clearly, something happened along the roof line,
Yeah.
which no one has any recollection of.
Well, what is that material? Is it plaster or what is it?
It's tin.
Tin?
These are tin stamps.
Tin ceiling, yeah.
Yeah, we went through this with Chris Williams, and these are very, this, this ceiling, it's amazing how intricate this ceiling is when you start staring at it, and how all these panels are linked from one end to another. And to get, we looked at replacement for these or to clean them up. It's like, this is all well out of the scope of a small municipality. So, just wanna let you know, I can't in good conscience go any other place except to an environmental inspector and start taking stuff down and see what the deal was. Another delay and another expense. But I had this tested last year and the year before, this floor downstairs, before we did the bathroom downstairs, I had the whole building tested. It all came up fine, and then this thing, now the water pouring through, it's like...
It's an old building?
Yeah, it's an old building.
It's a responsibility.
Yeah, and a lot of times gone by when probably a lot of money should have been put into it, but it's, you know, again, for a small municipality, this is an expensive
It's, yeah.
building to maintain.
Like owning a school or owning a church.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be great to, you know, if we can't make this work for us, it'd be great for the Historical Society or somebody with deep pockets to come in and really make this. You know, back to the Keefe and Western report where they talked about restoring this to its grandeur. Yeah, it would look beautiful. It'd be totally non-functional for a town, but it is a kind of a unique thing around, you know, having an old stone church like this from the 1800s. It's not in our budget to fix, though. That's for sure. So now, I just want the board to know, it's just something that I can't see any other way of progressing in this building until we take this on again. Like I said, air test, fine, but, because that's what we were concerned about two years ago. And before we did the bathroom downstairs, we wanted it all tested, which we did. But now this, that water coming through just was like, ooh, where's that going?
The only other thing I had, and maybe somebody else has some, Tim has sent around some communications about public funds. There's a lot of money there. Some of them do not have very restrictive uses to them. There's some of them are quite general, and I think, I think he's going to be talking about it in meetings in the future, so just be aware of that. Talk to people and that sort of stuff.
There are a couple of things about those funds that, if you're looking at, like for the parks, I forget the name, I apologize for some, I forget the name, but proceeds from that fund go directly into the park's budget every year. So the interest that's come from that, now, there have been some years where I noticed, too, where the trustees didn't transfer the money for whatever reason, but there's lines in the budget for that money to be transferred over, the interest from those funds. So, I mean, there's a lot of angles to look at in this.
Not all of them are, cannot be, you cannot spend the principal. Some of them are just...
Some are just wide open, yeah. But some of those are, that principal they're generating is being put into departments right now.
Yes, okay.
So I might have to go through the whole thing.
Not only in charge of the public trusts?
No, no, we have the directors of the...
You're right.
Board of Public Trustees, which is completely independent.
Rob, Robert is the chairman.
Rob's the chairman, yeah.
Rob's the chairman. No, Rob.
Store. From RCS.
Oh, okay.
RCS, he's been in here.
Yeah. And there is a lot of money, and some is completely dedicated, some is a lot looser. So it is a discussion the board should have.
We should probably have him come in and talk to us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, Rob's already said he would come in and go through.
Excellent, excellent.
I mean, I'm all forgetting anything we get like that, but...
Yeah.
I don't wanna get into something that's got a string on it that says, okay, we'll pay you for three years, and then after that, you pay for it.
Oh, no, no, these are, these are, they're trust.
Okay, well, I'm just...
They're trust, yeah, they're trust.
I don't like stuff with strings coming in the back door again.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, action items? We're all gonna take a look at the lights. You've been keeping notes. Are there any other action items?
Well, just dog licenses.
Well, that's...
There's action for the public to take.
Action for the public.
Please license your dogs.
License the dogs.
It really would be a shame to double and triple your cost of licensing your dog by waiting another week and a half.
Yes, we're gonna look at lights and report back to you, Dave.
Yeah, just call me directly individually, call me, just say thumbs up, thumbs down.
Well, we could sit around here for another hour and then we leave.
Yeah, wait till next door or two to come. It is unfortunate that the time of year we have to look at the lights is, of course, the longest.
Yeah, not on a four, you know?
Yeah, I know.
We're too old to go out on the touch.
Okay, any other, anything else?
No.
How about the big motion?
Mr. Turner?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.